Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting for Monday, April 25, 2022. I will call this meeting to order. It is exactly six o'clock. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during oral communications. Persons speaking during the general public comment may provide the planning board oral communication on any matter concerning city business. If you would like to participate in the public comment period, please call 818-238-3335. We will now hear from Mr. Attakunian for our invocation, and I will lead us in our flag salute, if you will please stand.
Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you guide our thoughts and give us the wisdom to engage in sound deliberation. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and exhibit kindness for all. Thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve you and this great city, and please help us accomplish our goals. In your name we pray, amen.
Please join us in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call?
Board Member Monaco?
Here.
Board Member Heiner?
Present.
Board Member Attakunian?
Present.
Vice Chair Rizadi?
I am here.
Let the record show, all board members are present.
Thank you. In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency, and in the interest of Public Health and Safety Board members will be participating in an online planning board meeting. City facilities are closed to the public until further notice, and the public will not be able to physically attend tonight's meeting. The city is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing, participating in the planning board meeting. In lieu of in-person attendance, members of the public may participate in the public comment period by calling 818-238-3335. Again, it's 818-238-3335. Do we have any announcements tonight?
No, we do not.
There are two hearings on tonight's agenda. We will start off with item number one. Now is the time and place for the hearing on project number 21-0005726, a request for a conditional use permit and determination of public convenience and necessity to allow the sale of beer and wine for an off-site consumption through the type 21 license at the existing Chevron station and the convenience store located at 140 East Alameda Avenue in Burbank Center Commercial Manufacturing Zone. This item was continued from the April 11, 2022, planning board meeting due to time and technical limitations that would have eliminated the ability for public to participate in the public comment hearing. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
No.
No. Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral, with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other person?
No.
No.
No. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Is there any written communications on this matter?
Other than anything that was included in the agenda packet, we haven't received any other comments.
Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Vice Chair Rizadi.
Sir.
Vice, Vice Member Rizadi and members of the board. My name is Joseph Panglinen, Planning Technician with the Planning Division of the Community Development Department. For your consideration tonight is an application for a conditional use permit for a type 20 alcohol license for the property located at 140 East Alameda Avenue, which is an existing Chevron gas station and convenience store. The applicant for conditional use permit is George Pearson, representing the owner at G&amp;M Oil Company LLC. An attendance tonight via Zoom is also Sheri Olson, representative for G&amp;M, to answer questions.
I think we got the wrong presentation up there.
Thank you. The CUP request is for a type 20 license to sell beer and wine for off-site consumption from the existing convenience store. Alcohol sales are permitted at this location upon approval of a CUP as required by Section 10-1-1116 Subsection 1 of the Burbank Municipal Code. The Chevron gas station and convenience store is not proposing any alterations or additions to the site. The CUP would allow the applicant to continue operation of the existing convenience store while adding beer and wine sales for off-site consumption as an ancillary component of their business. The existing convenience store operates 24 hours a day and seven days a week. The overall store would continue to operate within these hours, however, the alcohol sales would be limited to specified hours, which will be outlined later in the presentation as part of the discussion of the recommended conditions of approval. The existing Chevron gas station and convenience store is located at 140 East Alameda Avenue on the southeast corner of East Alameda Avenue and South San Fernando Boulevard. The gas station is located in the BCCM Burbank Center Commercial Manufacturing Zone. The site is approximately 11,470 square feet in size with a 1,350 square foot convenience store. Surrounding the gas station are other commercial and retail uses along East Alameda Avenue and South San Fernando Boulevard, as well as industrial uses to the east, along with residential multifamily housing located north of the site on Spazier Avenue. This map identifies other establishments within the same U.S. Census tract that have a license for off-sale alcohol retail. There are currently three of such licenses within the Census tract, the closest being 200 feet away on the other side of East Alameda Avenue. Approval of the CUP would increase the number of off-sale alcohol retail establishments in the Census tract to a total of four, which would result in an over-concentration or undue concentration of off-site alcohol sales within the designated Census tract. Therefore, the planning board is required to make a finding of the public convenience and necessity. Planning staff found that the provision of another off-sale alcohol retailer as an incidental use for an existing gas retailer and convenience store would serve the public convenience and necessity by providing a convenient option for those who wish to purchase beer and wine while fueling their vehicles without taxing the parking for the surrounding grocery stores and pharmacy, which would reduce the number of vehicle trips generated in the area. This is the existing floor plan. As shown in the floor plan, the display of the alcohol would be exclusively in one of the existing gondolas and cooler section of the convenience store and stored in the storage room and walk-in cooler. This area is approximately 113 square feet, which would make up approximately 8.4% of the gross floor area of the market. Staff received one public comment pertaining to the requested CUP for selling alcohol at this gas station. The comment expressed concern about having another off-sale alcohol retail use within East Alameda Avenue Commercial Corridor. Staff addressed the comment by pointing out that allowing the use would provide a convenient one-stop-shop solution for those who are fueling their vehicles without having to subsequently cross the busy intersection of East Alameda Avenue and South San Fernando Boulevard or taxing the parking of the surrounding grocery stores and pharmacy. Based on staff's analysis, the CUP request is compatible in the neighborhood character and surrounding commercial uses, which are made up of restaurants and various retail uses. The alcohol sales would be ancillary use inside the Chevron gas station and convenience store. There are not any interior or exterior changes to the convenience store being proposed with this CUP. Consistent with the previous off-site alcohol licenses before the board, staff incorporated several conditions of approval into the resolution that placed limitations to the business in the sale of alcohol while allowing the rest of the convenience store to continue its current operations. Such conditions include prohibiting the sale of single beer cans and limiting sales to packaging that contains at least four or more cans or bottles, limiting the alcohol sales to a maximum of 10% of the store area, prohibiting the sale of beer and wine from ice tubs, limiting the sales from 10:00 a.m. to midnight, and requiring the business owner enforce prohibitions against loitering and consumption of alcohol on the site. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning board approve resolution approving project number 21-0005726 for a conditional use permit to allow sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption through a type 20 license at the existing Chevron gas station and convenience store located at 140 East Alameda Avenue, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes my, this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now invite the applicant or the representative to address the planning board. You have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Sheri Olson on behalf of GM Oil, and thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I appreciate the time tonight to present this item. Just a little history of GM Oil and the city of Burbank. This site, back in late 2018, we tore down the existing building and rebuilt a beautiful freestanding extra-mile store. We put new tanks in, we put new dispensers in at that time, and built a beautiful store for the community to, you know, to partake in. We spent at least 200, excuse me, $2.3 million at that location. We're currently undergoing another location in Burbank at 2501 West Olive Avenue, as where we're going to be investing another $3 million into that site as well. So we're pretty vested into the city of Burbank. We do have a lot of security measures in place. We have a tremendous amount of security cameras at all of our locations, at least over 30. We do provide lockable cooler doors. We have a security cameras on the canopies as well as the interior, exterior, all around. And as you can tell by the interior, our cooler doors are closest to the cashier, and they're limited and they're lockable. And we're here to answer any questions that you might have for us. We do have a zero tolerance on loitering or any other onsite activities, and we have a very, very close relationship with the police department.
Well, thank you so much. We will now open the meeting up to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the planning board, please call 818-238-3335. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we take the first few minutes to get the first callers through.
At the moment, there are no callers in the queue, but we'll allow some time.
Okay, let's give it a couple minutes.
There are no callers in the queue.
Okay, there being no further public comment on this item, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
Yes, Vice Chair, I just wanted to have, as a point of clarification, I believe in one of the slides it mentioned that the alcohol sales hours stated that it was 11:00 a.m. to midnight. It's actually 10:00 a.m. to midnight, just so have that.
Yeah. Does the applicant or the representative wish to make any further comments? You have a maximum time of 10 minutes for rebuttal.
We have read the conditions of approval and concur with the conditions of approval and worked with staff, and we have no further comments at this time.
Well, thank you for that. Does the board have any questions for the applicant? Seeing...
Vice Chair Rizadi, I just have one question for the applicant.
Yeah.
We appreciate you coming on tonight and giving us the background. I just wanted to find out the, how are you going to be enforcing the age limitation on purchase of alcohol? What other measures are you going to be employing?
Yes, we have a point-of-sale, so when you take an age-restricted product to the register, it automatically stops the sale and checks for ID at that point, and they'll have to scan the ID through in order to release the sale of alcohol.
Do you believe that would be sufficient to stop any sale to underage?
Yes, it was. We have an excellent record with the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control at all of our stores. We take very pride in making sure that, know that alcohol when it is sold responsibly, and we take that very seriously in all of our stores.
Thank you very much.
Okay, does any board members have any additional questions or comments for staff or the applicant? Seeing none. I now declare the public comment period closed, the public hearing closed, and the planning board will now deliberate what is the planning board's pleasure, comments or motions.
If it's all right with the board members, I'd like to propose a motion.
I have no issue with that.
All right, I'd like to propose a resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank approving a conditional use permit for project number 21-0005726 and a determination of public convenience and necessity allowing the incidental sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption of an existing Chevron gas station and convenience store located at 140 East Alameda Avenue, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
Thank you for that motion. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, let's call the, the roll, please.
Board Member Monaco?
Approved.
Board Member Heiner?
Approved.
Board Member Attakunian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizadi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, board members, we're going to move on to item number two. Now is the time and place for the hearing on project number 21-0000863 concerning the adoption of an initial study of mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the request for development review and to construct an unmanned electrical distribution facility with a new control room, new transformers, and other related equipment, and a variance to allow the following. One, or, yeah, one, a reduction of the minimum setback requirement. Two, construct a 12-foot-tall wall rather than the maximum eight-foot currently allowed. Three, a reduction in the number of trees required in the front and side yards, non-residential uses. And four, relief from the requirement to locate and screen trash bins for, for a project located at 228 South Naomi Street in the MDC III Media District General Business Zone. This item was continued from the April 11, 2022, planning board meeting due to time and technical limitations that would have eliminated the ability of the public to participate in public comment period of the hearing. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
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 Nope. Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other person?
Sorry. No.
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 And no. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
If there are, they're only those that were included in your agenda packet.
Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Hi. Good evening, Vice Chair Rizadi and members of the planning board. My name is Amanda Landry. I'm a senior planner in the planning division. I'll be presenting this item on behalf of Associate Planner John Joseph Anyabuchi, who was unable to be here tonight due to illness. Tonight, the board is being asked to consider a request for development review and a variance for the proposed reconstruction of an electrical distribution center at 228 South Naomi Street in the MDC III zone. The site is currently developed with an existing unmanned electrical distribution facility, which was originally approved by the city in 1970. Since that time, the facility has outgrown its useful life, and in order to provide the current and future needs of the media district, a new facility with greater capacity is needed. This slide depicts the location of the project site, which is in yellow. There's a red arrow pointing to it. As you can see, it's surrounded by other properties that are also zoned media district commercial as well as PDs. In this aerial view of the project site, you can see that the surrounding development consists of multi-story garage structures, surface garage, surface parking areas, and larger commercial buildings. The site itself is developed with one single-story building and a large area of outdoor electrical equipment. This slide depicts a 3D rendering of the proposed higher-capacity electrical distribution center. Majority of the distribution center is going to be enclosed within the two buildings that you see here with three outdoors transformers. The site will be enclosed by a 12-foot-tall wall, which is needed to secure the site and screen it from view from the public. There are two points of access to the site. Both of them are driveways. One is from South Naomi Street, and the other is from Willow Street. In order for the applicant to be able to develop this project and provide a higher-capacity unmanned electrical distribution center to serve the community, the applicant is requesting four variances. A variance is a request to deviate from the current zoning requirements when the property owner can demonstrate that under the prevailing ordinance, hardship which is out of their control and unique to the property prevents them from the full development and use of that property. And the four variance requests relate to building setbacks, site landscaping, fences and walls, and the location of the trash bin. I'll be going into a little bit more detail for each of these variances in the coming slides. So for the first variance request, which is a request to have a zero-foot setback and a two-foot setbacks on the two street-facing frontages instead of the five-foot required setback. And the reason the applicant has indicated this request is necessary is because as part of this development, the applicant is required to provide certain dedications along Willow Street and South Naomi Street, which reduces the buildable area of the lot. Those dedications are required to improve the sidewalk and parkway. However, the reduction of the size and the buildable area of the lot would mean that they would not be able to develop an upgraded electrical distribution center that can serve the current and future needs of the community. And because of this, the applicant is proposing a zero-foot setback along Willow Street and a two-foot setback along Naomi Street. The second variance request that the applicant has, is requesting tonight relates to landscaping. The current requirements would be for 12 trees in the setback areas of this project site. The applicant is requesting to plant three trees. And this is because, again, for, to have an adequate planting area, the building would have to be set back further from the property line, which would reduce the usable space to build this necessary and required updated unmanned electrical distribution facility. So they are requesting to build the three, to install the three trees. In addition, the installation of 12 trees could propose, pose problems in the future with the root intrusions into the walls and/or building, which may disrupt the service and provision of power. The next request for a variance relates to fences and walls. The requirement is for a maximum eight-foot-tall wall, and the applicant is requesting 12 feet. The applicant has requested 12 feet because this is necessary to properly secure the site. The site does have long frontages along Willow and South Naomi, and it needs to be secured from the public. The height is also necessary to screen the inside of the site from the public view to ensure a comfortable pedestrian environment. The unique shape and size of the site means that the site is generally very exposed, and if they were more typical site, this wouldn't be an issue. The use of the site is also very unique. It's a critical public utility that provides critical power to the city. And the 12-foot wall will help secure this critical infrastructure. The final variance request pertains to the location or provision of trash, trash bins. The applicant is requesting that rather than providing the one trash bin, they would like to provide none on site. Again, the site is unmanned, and it is unlikely to generate a significant amount of trash. And if the applicant is required to build the trash on the site, the usable area that is required to build the critical infrastructure is reduced, and the applicant would not be able to build a new substation with the capacity needed to serve the current and future needs of the community. Based on the information I provided in the last few slides, staff believes that the project satisfies the four findings that are required in order to approve a variance. And these generally pertain to the unusual shape and size of the site, the very unique use of the site that was previously approved by the city, and the need to provide critical infrastructure to the surrounding community, which is consistent with the land use goals and policies of the general plan. And this is all recapped in the staff report. The second component of this request is a development review, which is required for any new construction in commercial and multifamily zones. The planning board may approve a request for development review if the application is consistent with all of the provisions of the Burbank Municipal Code. Notwithstanding the four variances that were just mentioned, the project otherwise complies with all of the other applicable development standards. This project was publicly noticed in several different ways. A newspaper notice was published, an onsite sign was installed, public notice was mailed to all residents and property owners within 1,000 feet of the project site. A public notice was also mailed to all of those same owners when the draft environmental documents were released, and a community meeting was held on Wednesday, March 30, 2022. This project is also subject to SEQA, and to comply with the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, an initial study and M&amp;D was prepared, and that document was made available to the public from February 23 to March 25, 2022, and no comments or no substantial comments were received. As part of this document, a mitigation monitoring and reporting program has also been prepared, and it includes... and it includes best practices and standard mitigation measures to ensure the protection of nesting birds, a hazardous materials management program, and to ensure that any tribal cultural resources are appropriately addressed if found during the development of the project. Based on the information in the staff report and given in this presentation, staff recommends that the planning board make a motion to adopt the two resolutions that are attached to the staff report. And those two resolutions pertain to the adoption of the initial study and MND and the associated MMRP, the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and then the resolution approving the request for development review and the variance. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, ma'am. I will now invite the applicant or the representative to address the planning board. You'll have a maximum time of 15 minutes.
Great, thank you. Let me get this presentation up. All right. Good evening, Vice Chair, members of the board. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Michael Wang. I'm the project manager for the Willow Substation. I work over at Burbank Water Power. And tonight, I'll go over some aspects of the project with you, just so that you know what we're planning to do there. Currently onsite is a substation, 34 kilovolt to 4 kilovolt substation that was constructed in 1970. As you can see in the top picture, most of the equipment there is open-air style equipment. You can see it pretty obviously there. And then from the street on the bottom view, you can also see some equipment in the background. Here's a street view from the Naomi Street side. This substation was constructed, like I said, in 1970, so that puts it at about 52 years. And most of the equipment there is reaching its end of life, and so it's about due to be replaced. And so we have plans to replace it with a new substation. We'll be calling it Willow Substation for the time being. And as you can see here in this top picture, most of the substation site is going to be fully enclosed. This helps a variety of factors, including maintenance and reliability of the substation. In addition, in the same footprint of this site, we'll be able to have about three and a half times the power capacity for the surrounding area. That includes a lot of the large commercial customers in the area, the hospital, the media district. In addition, the substation will help to relieve some of the other substations in the surrounding areas of the city and provide additional capacity in that way as well. We're looking forward to building the substation to help serve the continued and future expected development in the media district area. We're seeing a lot of activity in that area, and it can be a critical piece in helping us to support that development activity. Rough timeline for the construction of the project would be to award the contract late Q2 2022, in a few months, starting construction sometime in Q3 2022, and it would go until Q2 of 2024. With that, I'd like to open up for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open up the public hearing for any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the planning board, you may call 818-238-3335. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we get the first few callers through.
There are no callers in the queue.
Thank you. There would be no further public comment. I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the community development department like to make any further comments?
No, I have no further comments.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to make any further comments?
No further comments. Thank you.
Great. Does the board have any comments for staff or the applicant?
I have a question.
Mr. Monaco?
Michael, I'm always concerned about fire, because especially we're dealing with a plan that you're tripling the power here. And I was wondering how, and again, this is because I'm a little bit of a newbie here. How does the fire department, Burbank Fire Department, weigh in on something like this? Because I will tell you, I have seen transformer fires, and they're a very humbling experience. How does that come into the picture? Again, transformers also have PCBs and other environmental thing. So I'm just curious, how does the fire department look at this?
Yeah, definitely. We have consulted with the fire department on this project in addition to previous projects that are similar to this one, and we've solicited their opinions for our fire suppression systems for the buildings. The main concerns probably for a substation when you're talking about fire is anything arc-related, and so the biggest risk you would have is open-air style substations. With these enclosed-style substations, all the connections are fully covered, and so there is less of a risk for any of these arcing instances to happen. No bird is going to be flying onto these opener buses. The relaying here is extremely fast. The equipment is improved greatly from the 1970s, and so everything here is just designed to be a lot safer.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant?
Hi, one question for Mr. Wang. Your image of the new building had seven beautiful trees. Why are we down to just three trees now?
Three trees? We met with forestry to discuss the tree requirement to see what was necessary on site. I think a lot of it was the issues as far as the landscaping that we have and it being so close to buildings. We have pretty tight restrictions on Willow Street especially. Five feet, five feet for sidewalk and landscape boxes for trees and stuff like that. So we were just trying to keep the trees down to a minimum onsite, and that's the agreement that we reached with the forestry department.
I see.
Vice Chair, if I may add?
Yeah.
I believe as a, I want to say as an alternative, what forestry focused on was vegetative ground cover and then also some screening as far as on the building, on the walls of the building. So I think in lieu of additional trees that could potentially limit pedestrian pathways and potentially encroach into the footings of the walls that are part of the primary structure, this was kind of the alternate solution to get some shade along the perimeter, but do it in such a way that it doesn't potentially impact operations in the long term.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Seeing none, I will now declare the public hearing closed. The planning board will now deliberate what is the planning board's pleasure. I'll just lead off and just say that this project is a substation for our community that's being upgraded. It's surrounded by parking lots. It's exactly where it should be in a part of the community that really, they don't see it very well. They're asking for setback amendments, and that's primarily why we can't put more trees, because there'd be less parking sidewalk space. But all in all, given the benefits of the project, where it's located, the safety factors of the wall, I can certainly make all the findings. Mr. Otakunian?
Yes, I think under the circumstances, when you have a substation that dates back to 1970, I think that's probably more of a hazard or a problem perhaps than one that we're going to be just building a new substation where it's going to be providing services for the coming years, many years to come. So I think these are small adjustments, I would say, that need to be made in order to make this a reality, instead of trying to uproot the entire location and now trying to find a new location to see if that location and the time that it will require and the resources that it requires to go through that process. So I think these are not major requests or variances, and I think I'm able to make the findings and support the project as presented.
Any other comments or a motion?
There are no comments. I can make a motion.
I don't see any comments. If you have a comment, just put your hand up. Nope. Nope.
I propose a resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank adopting an initial study and mitigated negative declaration for project number 21-0000863 and adopting the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. And secondly, I'd like to propose a resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank approving project number 21-0000863. A request for a development review to construct an unmanned electrical distribution facility with a new control room, new transformers, and other related equipment, as well as variance to allow the following: one, a reduction of the minimum setback requirement; two, to construct a 12-foot-tall wall rather than the maximum eight feet currently allowed; three, a reduction in the number of trees required in the front and side yards of non-residential uses; and four, relief from the requirements to locate and screen trash bins to provide zero trash bins for the property at 228 South Naomi Street.
We have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Is there any more discussion? If so, just give me a little hand wave. Seeing none, why don't we poll the board members?
Board member Monaco?
Approved.
Board member Heiner?
Yes.
Board member Otakunian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizadi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now is the time for oral communications from the public. Any person speaking during this period may address the planning board on any matter concerning city business. Comments are limited to three minutes. To participate, call 818-238-3335. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we take a moment, a couple of minutes to allow the first few followers to get in.
There are no callers in the queue.
There...
No callers, no.
Okay. And I recognize that noise. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for reports from city staff. Do we have any reports?
We don't have any reports.
Okay. Now is the time for the approval of the minutes from the April 11, 2022 Planning Board meeting. There, are there any questions, comments, or can we get a motion on that?
I make a motion. We approve the minutes from the April 11, 2022 Planning Board meeting.
Motion?
I second it.
We have a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, let's poll us.
Board member Monaco?
Approved.
Board member Heiner?
Yes.
Board member Otakunian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizadi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now is the time for introduction of any additional agenda items. The planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except for to place it on a future agenda. Do any planning board members have anything that they want to introduce? Seeing none, now is the time for city planner comments.
Thank you, Vice Chair, members of the board. Thank you for your time tonight on the continued item. Wanted to just bring to your attention that on May 9, there is an agendized item. It's the update to the city's development impact fees, which were actually incorporated into our zoning code. So that'll be coming before the board with some consideration of a recommendation to the council on this item. In addition, May 9 would be the first date upon which the board is anticipated to be in council chambers here at the dais with the vice chair. So wanted to bring that to your attention. So at that meeting, it would be the full board in attendance with city staff, but no actual public. The public would still be participating virtually. And in addition to that, we would be taking still phone input in addition to, you know, the deliberations of the board. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board. And soon thereafter, you know, as council goes through a similar process, once they're open, so to speak, and now the public can attend, we will follow suit as a board. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board as well.
That's exciting. Okay. We now adjourn to the next regular planning board meeting on Monday, May 9, 2022 at 6:00 PM. The meeting will be held in person in the city council chambers at 275 East Olive Avenue. The public is invited to attend the meeting in person.
I guess I stand corrected, Vice Chair, so I guess they will be able to attend the meeting.
Vice Chair and fellow board members, I think that is the date that we're inviting members of the public to attend as well. But from my understanding, we're also allowing comment to occur virtually, so we're going to keep that option.
So everything is correct other than the fact that
That's right.
I stand corrected that people will be able to attend.
That's right. I think council wanted to have both from this point forward, I think for three-month trial period, both public comment and in-person comment. So, yeah.
My apologies.
Yeah, no problem.
Will masks be mandated?
No.
No, okay.
No, Board member Monaco?
Not saying you can't wear a mask.
I was going to say, yeah.
No. The public is invited to attend the meeting in person or to view the meeting at home online, and you'll be able to call in for that feature. So the three ways are in-person, at the appropriate time during the meeting, by leaving an e-comment on the city webpage at www.burbankca.gov ecomments, or by calling directly to the planning board meeting at 818-238-3335. Thank you all for your participation tonight, and have a good evening.